Okay, good afternoon. My name is Bill Henry. I'm the councilman for the 4th District and Chair of the City Council's Equity and Structure Committee. I am calling to order this work session of the Equity and Structure Committee to consider a series of charter amendments. Also joined with us here on the conference call/WebEx call are Councilwoman Danielle McCray of the 2nd District, member of the committee, Councilman Christopher Burnett of the 8th District, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And we are also joined by Matt Stagman of the Mayor's Office. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark of the 4th District.
Yeah, that's okay. Don't be sorry. I won't be any trouble. I'm just here to hear about the Board of the Board of the Ordinance, the Board of Estimates, Bill.
Okay, well, let's-
They have to come and go, but I'm interested in getting it out of committee. Thank you.
So, let's actually, let's start with, let's start with going down the list of the charter amendments that are currently remaining in committee and how this conversation will work today. Still remaining in committee are 19-0379, Ordinance of Estimates, which would authorize the City Council to amend the ordinance of estimates and in doing so, add or amend items of appropriation. Also remaining in committee is 19-0382, City Administrator, for the purpose of establishing the position of City Administrator as the Chief Administrative Officer of Baltimore City. City Council Bill 14, I'm sorry, 19-0470, Exercise of Legislative Powers, for the purpose of modifying and clarifying the City Council's authority to legislate certain powers and duties of all units of the executive branch. And City Council 20-0489, Board of Estimates Composition, which would remove the Director of Public Works and the City Solicitor from the Board of Estimates. And I think there were also, here we go, also 20-0492, Charter Amendment, City Council Reduction in Size, which was my charter amendment to reconfigure the council into six single-member districts and three at large. And then finally, City Council Bill 20-0504, Charter Amendment, City Council Composition, Councilman Dorsey's Charter Amendment to reconfigure the City Council as previously amended by this committee, that would now amend the charter to create a city council of 10 single-member districts and five at-large members. There are two other charter amendments that are in committee. They are 17-0097, Tenant Legal Assistance Fund, and 19-0353, Underground Conduit System, Sale, Transfer, or Franchise Prohibited. Both of those have not yet had their public hearing as required by the rules and the charter at the request of their respective sponsors, so I am not including either of those charter amendments in this work session, and they are still sitting in committee until their sponsors are interested in moving forward with them. At this point, what I would like to do is share with the committee and the public that Councilman Dorsey and I have agreed to hold both of our charter amendments on the composition of the City Council off until next term, when these ideas will be resubmitted to what we expect to be a Charter Review Commission composed in early 2021. Since neither of these charter amendments would go into effect until the election of 2024, there is plenty of time to continue to discuss them, so we will not be proceeding with further discussion of those two charter amendments in this process. Similarly, I'm looking for the, here we go, I'm looking for the 19-0470, Exercise of Legislative Powers, after reviewing the Law Department's concerns about this charter amendment and a conversation with the Department of Legislative Reference. I'm going to not formally withdraw it, but we're not going to move forward. We'll have continued conversation on this charter amendment, and instead, I will be reaching out to our state delegation to talk about making these changes through the state process in terms of dealing with the Constitution of the state. And so what that leaves us with are the 19-0379, the charter amendment that I was the lead sponsor for, which would authorize the City Council to amend the ordinance of estimates to increase as well as decrease items of appropriation. And the two amendments by the Council President, 19-0382, City Administrator, and 20-0489, Board of Estimates Composition. My understanding at this time is that the President's office is still working on amendments for their charter amendments and are not ready to move forward with further discussion on them. Mr. McIlly, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, that leaves us with time now to discuss City Council Bill 19-0379, Ordinance of Estimates. We had amendments that were prepared at the chairman's behest based on the requests of the Department of Law and the Finance Department to insert, no, I'm sorry, actually, do we have these electronically that we can put them up on the screen?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I actually, can I ask a question of the Law Department on 19-0379, the Ordinance of Estimates, Bill?
By all means.
Thank you. We have Elena with us, right?
And Vic.
Elena, we've recently been having these discussions about the power of the City Council with respect to constraining funds in the budget, placing conditions on the release of funds. And the charter, as it is interpreted by the Law Department, allows that the City Council can place certain constraints on funds that are appropriated to agencies other than city agencies, but interprets that to say, to mean that we can place no constraints on the release of funds with respect to city agencies such as DOT or Rec. &amp; Parks. and such. Would this bill, 19-0379, impact that in any way? And is that something that could be granted in a bill like this?
So, 379 just allows you to increase items of appropriation. Can you hear me?
Yes.
379 is one that allows you, is the charter amendment that would allow the council to increase items of appropriation, and it doesn't speak to that in its current form. My concern would be that you're, you really are then sort of getting mixed up between the powers of the executive and the powers of the legislative branches. The executive branch is the branch of government that is in control of the agencies, and I just think it's sort of a weird way of doing things. I don't know if it would be legal or not because I haven't had a chance to really look into it, but-
Well, Elena, if I could just hop in, the, the, the process that-
Yes.
-Councilman Dorsey is referring to, and I know I have as well as he, been told by our colleagues in the state legislature, that the state legislature follows this convention all the time, so-
Okay, well, stand corrected then, I guess, but I don't know how that, I mean, they have slightly different requirements in there. The constitutional requirements are different, but-
Well, so I think I would take Councilman Dorsey's line of questioning and move it towards a proactive request of the Law Department, which would be, how could 379, how could this existing charter amendment itself be further amended to move the charter conflicts with the council placing specific restrictions on the use of appropriations?
And when I responded to him, what I was trying to say is there is, there are checks and balances in government, and that's the reason we, I have the legislative branch and the executive branch, judiciary branch, and I think that this would eliminate those checks and balances because it would allow the legislative branch to really just sort of come in and, for whatever purpose they, so, you know, they saw, they had, try to mess with the executive branch through funding of the different agencies. So, for that reason, I think, I don't think it's appropriate, but I can look into it more. That's just my off-the-cuff answer.
Councilman Dorsey, did you have any follow-ups?
No, just to say-
Vic may have something to add.
Excuse me?
Vic may have something to add to that. I don't know.
Oh, Victor here. Yeah, I mean, look, the, the power is clearly granted to us to, even if with some limitation to it, the power is granted to us with respect to agencies that we don't control. My question is, why shouldn't we have the same power with agencies that we do control?
Yeah, I mean, Elena, Elena's right. We're gonna have to take a look at it. I mean, at the end of the day, as long as we stay, from my perspective, as long as we stay focused on appropriations only and not getting into policy questions of that nature, when you, when you put conditions on, which is a totally different fish, we may have, we may have some leeway there.
Okay.
We're willing to look into it and see what, you know, see what the parameters are of that kind of requirement in a, in the charter, definitely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, allowing the question.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Johnson of Council Services has the electronic version of the proposed amendment for this charter amendment, so he's gonna put that up on the screen now? Yep. And I, this is the amendment that we were going to offer on the floor before we brought the charter amendment itself back into committee to continue this conversation. So, this is the amendment that I will be offering to the committee when we have the voting session for this bill. Are there any other questions about the charter amendment in general for the ordinance of estimates, or are there any questions about this amendment?
Mr. Chair, could you just walk us through it? Unfortunately, I know it was sent out earlier, but I didn't get a chance to review. My apologies.
Yeah, actually, this is, this amendment was at the request of, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting if it was either finance or law, so I would defer to whichever office claims it to walk us through the details.
It was, this is Victor Turvolo from the Law Department. It was, I think it was our amendment. I know it was our amendment in part, and the one concern that we had was, oh, we had two concerns, and both of them are taken care of by this particular amendment, and I think we talked about it in the last work session about how this would solve our problem. The, in Section 7A of the Charter now, it says, "The City Council should not," well, "The bill does not provide for the same framework as written for additional increases as currently existent in Section 7A of the Charter," and I'm sorry, I'm reading this at this point because I, what the, what the draft was. "As with these reductions, the City Council should not increase the amounts fixed by law by Board of Arbitration for the Fire Department or principal and interest on municipal debt." So, we were trying to make sure that you couldn't increase the amounts that related to those. And we're also, at the end of the, and then at the end of the bill, there were brackets around supplemental appropriations, and basically allowing supplemental appropriations to go, to be, to be, go to the City Council without the Board of Estimates even seeing them. So, we wanted to make sure that the Board of Estimates had that, and that's in the current provisions of the charter. This bill would have taken those out. So, with the amendments on your desk today, what you're looking at on screen, both of those concerns should be taken care of.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett, is that sufficient? Do you have further questions?
No, that's helpful. I actually do remember talking about this now.
Yeah. Okay, Councilwoman McCray, did you have any questions about this amendment? Okay, so, at this point, I'll open it up to the rest of the committee, which would, I'm sorry, now that the committee takes care of, I would open up to the rest of the council. So, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I just, oh, I just want the second line of the, the second part be, is that what, Victor, is that what you were just talking about? I don't, I don't know what it means. It's probably the B.
Yeah, you would, I'm sorry.
Is that what you were talking about?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that's, that, that particular provision is in the charter, and you'd have to see the charter provision, and I can pull it, I can read it to you, but-
Well, no, you've already been over it in committee. I don't want to drag everybody back through the same discussion, but what are the, in general, are you exempting certain items that are in the budget, otherwise be eligible for addition or subtraction? Are you, are you pulling them out? And if so, what are they? Are they the ones you just described?
Yes, that's, that's correct. What's happening is that this particular amendment- The bill as drafted allows you to increase items of the budget. The draft said would also have included items that dealt with arbitration and this other matter.
Okay, I got it.
And we were pulling that out of the bill.
And that's what that is?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Dorsey, did you have any questions about this amendment or the bill in general?
Just the bill in general, this would allow the movement of money in both the operating and capital budget, correct? And are there any additional constraints placed on one or the other that does not exist for the other?
I don't see any of those, Councilmember.
I mean, other than the ones that Victor just alluded to in terms of, in the charter, there are things that we already can't cut, and so we also, you know, we still wouldn't be able to cut them, and while, while I still find it a little entertaining that we would ever decide we want to allocate more money to debt service, yeah, that's entirely possible. We could, we might, we might have decided to do this, but this will remind us that we should.
I think that's all I have to ask about this. Thank you.
Okay. I'm realizing that we, we failed at the beginning of this to do our little speech about how public participation works for a web-based committee hearing, so I'm now gonna ask them to put the rules back up on the screen for how people who are calling in can provide public input during these. Basically, if you are also, if you're logged on, such that you, you're actually part of the video call, then you can access through your browser, you can access the hand raised symbol at the bottom of the Participants menu. So, if you click on the middle circle of options on your screen, it opens the Participants box on the right-hand side. At the very bottom, there's an open palm icon with hover text of raised hand. If you click on that, then I and the host will be able to see that you are interested in testifying. Otherwise, what we would do for someone who was calling in and wasn't able to use that function, we would go through a very detailed process to unmute you and find out if you had a testimony to give or questions to ask. I will say, it does not look like we have anyone who is calling in by phone on the attendee list that I can see. Mr. D'Amico, could you mute yourself? I think we're getting some feedback from you. Thank you. And so, that's what I remember in terms of how we are supposed to be sharing the, the public input instructions, and I would be happy to take the advice of either Elena or Victor as to whether it's important that we put that up on the screen to read if there is actually no one on the, who's calling in who can't see and hear the rest of the conversation.
Well, for my money, this is Victor. For my money, it's better for you just to explain it just the way you explain it as opposed to putting up in writing.
Okay, all right. So, at this point, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open the floor to questions or comments from other participants or attendees. So, if you would like to be recognized, please use the participant function to raise your hand. And I am, at this point, not seeing anyone with their hand raised, so I will say, if you're having trouble using that function, I would ask that you turn your camera on and wave wildly at me so that I can know to recognize you, but in the absence-
Councilman, can I, can I make one suggestion or comment? This is Bob Sennemy from BBMR.
Yes, sir.
So, one thing that caused a little bit of confusion this week when, when folks were voting on the budget, and I think is worth mentioning here, is that this bill talks about, the language says that you cannot exceed the total amount in the ordinance of estimates, that if, whatever changes are made, it can't exceed the amount that was originally proposed. I just wanted to note that there are multiple different fund sources in the ordinance of estimates. So, for example, you know, one of the items that was cut out of the fiscal '21 budget was unallocated grant funding for the Police Department. In the, in this bill, you could technically cut that funding and add it to the general fund, even if there's no general fund revenue to support it. So, you're taking the entire ordinance of estimates as one bottom-line number, but it's probably more pertinent to treat it as different funds because you can't move money between funds. They're different sources. And so, I just wanted to raise that. I don't know if it would become, if it could become a problem, but I just wanted to mention that. The other thing to get to, on the capital budget side, the capital budget side is listed by, by project, and so the same is true on the capital project side, that there are different fund sources. So, in other words, if you cut a project in a federal fund, it doesn't mean that we have revenue available in the general fund to pay for it, and it doesn't mean that you could reallocate that federal fund to another federal fund because the federal funds might have been specifically for that project or that program. So, these are just some challenges that I think you, we need to think about, you know, potentially have some conversation around or think about. This is, you know, like, I mean, you guys have heard my, you know, opinion on this bill, why I think it's a bad idea, and I won't repeat all that today, but there are, because you've heard my, my story on that many times, but I think there are a lot of unintended consequences here that can, that can create some mischief and can create some problems, really, after the budget is passed.
So, best way I can think to respond to that is to say, those are all good points, and while I would like to say that those concerns would be unnecessary, clearly, I can't, based on recent behavior. So, if, if, Mr. Sennemy, if you would like to work with someone in the Law Department on crafting an amendment that would specifically constrain on the operating and the capital sides of the budget, that would constrain money being cut from one fund or, and then reallocated to a project or activity in a different fund. Councilwoman Clark?
I'm, I'm sorry I walked out. I've got a little problem going on, but I was thinking when I looked at the amendments, the ones that were on the screen, we just use the term "general funds" or are there, that's what we're talking about, and just insert that. I mean, I have, I have a certain urgency because we're running out of time to make, we're not running out today, but we, we have limited time left to get this on the ballot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's all. So, can't we just say, I was thinking, gee, that should probably say "general funds," the amendment. That's what you're talking about, and maybe we define what general funds are in the bill.
I'm, I will say, I will say as the sponsor, I'm hesitant to do it that, that, to, to, to address this issue that simply, for the, for the basic reason that the council may want to take advantage of the ability to move money around inside some other funds when that is physically possible. And so, I'm, I'm hesitant to limit this authority to just-
To general funds?
Yeah, I'm hesitant.
Wow. Oh, you think big. I hope we can fast, too.
So, here's, here's my question. It was not our intention to do the vote today. Anyway, we have a voting session scheduled for tomorrow. So, my question is, could, could Mr. Sennemy and the Law Department work out a more nuanced amendment by about this time tomorrow afternoon?
I think so, and, and, you know, Victor, I can, I can touch base with you after this for more detailed conversation. I think what I just want to get across is that a federal fund, a federal fund or state funds is a very broad category, but within there, there are, you know, those, those are earmarked for very specific projects. You know, a federal grant is earmarked for something very specific, so you can't change that line item and move it somewhere else, or else it's not eligible for the grant. General fund might be, yeah, general fund is probably simple. General fund might be, yeah, general fund is probably simple, simpler. There are other, there are other funds with some discretion, so, you know, for example, it is a parking management fund, parking enterprise fund, where we have some discretion on where the spending is, that's usually not where the conversations end up, so I can work with Victor on that. But I think you would run in jeopardy, you would be in jeopardy of moving money away from a grant and trying to find somewhere else, and then you'd, you'd end up getting rid of the grant that you had.
Absolutely.
Well, then, let's, 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 let's use, let's, let's bring a belt and suspenders tomorrow. Why don't you craft a simple one that just limits this authority to the general fund, but please take a stab at the other one. And I'm also gonna take the opportunity for tomorrow to look through the budget and confirm that there are examples, but none of which I can name off the top of my head right now, where it would have been nice to be able to move money around inside a different fund. So let me, if, if, if I can't find any of those examples, then I'll shoot you guys an email saying, don't worry about the more complex one, just change it to the general fund.
Rats, what was I gonna say? I had, I'm sorry, hang the thought.
Okay. Two, 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 okay, so that was Mr. Sennemy. Oh. Councilwoman Clark, you're muted.
So, finally. Let me just say that if we do, if you go the simple route, we need somewhere in there to define it, because there are different sources for what general funds are. Or are there? Or at least.
No. General, general is general, so either in the...
So it's a common, everybody knows what it is.
Yeah, and it's also, yeah, general is the same in the capital budget as it is in the operating, so it's the same, it's the same source.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, it was, it goes back to sources, so, yeah.
Right.
All right, so that's how, it will self-define. Like you put it in all the budget stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's listed throughout the budget, in the summaries in the budget, it lists all the total budget operating in capital by, by fund, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. Okay, then, let me put out that call for question or comment again. I am again looking at a list of participants and list of attendees. I am seeing no raised hands, and I am seeing no turned-on cameras with wildly gesticulating figures attempting to get my attention, so I am going to say that there is no additional public input to be provided and no additional questions or concerns raised by participants. And so with that, I believe that was the only remaining business to try to accomplish today. As we said at the beginning, the two charter amendments in which the council president is the lead sponsor, city administrator and board of estimates composition, the president's office still has work they would like to do on those charter amendments. And the two on city council composition and reduction in size, Councilman Dorsey and I are holding off on until the broader charter review process. So with that all having been done, I'm going to recess this work session until three, is it 3:30 tomorrow? Till 3:30 tomorrow, Thursday afternoon, at which point we will hopefully return to have a voting session on 19-0379, Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates. Thank you very much, and see you all tomorrow.